A special city council meeting workshop is called to order. Public comments, we have none. Out of number two, emergency management annual update. David Ball, come on up this way.
This way. I've never done this before, so. I've got a handout, but to keep it a little shorter in time, I'll just kind of go over the major highlights of the handout. I currently serve as the Central Oklahoma Emergency Management Area Vice President for Central Oklahoma, which has been a cool thing, I've been able to get to know a lot of the central area emergency managers. April 23rd, I was asked to do a weather program for four, five, and six-year-olds at First Christian Church for Mother's Day out program. Really neat experience, I love doing programs like that. May the 20th, within, I don't know, 15, 20 minutes after Moore was hit by the tornado, Galen Catch, the Moore Emergency Manager, was texting an hour or so after that, Eric and his guys went down, assisted with Moore. About 5 o'clock on the 20th, our Logan County Task Force went, traveled with them, helped out, did what we could down there. May the 29th, I was asked to do a weather program at Community Church up south of town, really good response from that. May the 30th, we had the tornado warning here in town, just south of town here a little ways. Fortunately, by the grace of God, we didn't have a touchdown, the funnel was there, got people what to do if that happens. June 1st and 2nd, Cockney Creek decided it needed to expand its banks a little bit, we went to 37.40 feet. So, a good learning experience. Saturday, Sunday, it's inconvenience, everybody pissed in, did the right thing, turned out well. June the 21st, we had FEMA come to town with the city and the county, we were looking to try to get some FEMA assistance from the flood on June 1st and 2nd. Our county threshold is $144,376. Unfortunately, we weren't able to meet that, but working with Maxine and Val and Tenny and Charles and many others here in the city, the state OEM had a special fund that we were able to get some money out of that basically covered your expenses from the flood. $15,263, I think is what you guys got back, somewhere along the way. So, covered your overtime costs. Not always available, but it's an option if we don't meet the FEMA threshold. I can't guarantee it'll ever be available again, but you never know until you try. I know you guys were grateful for it, the county was grateful for what they got. August 23rd, I had a weather safety booth at our county fair, several of you were there, some of you were pie judges that evening, and it's a good experience there. September 5th through the 8th, I was the logistics officer for the Mumford and Son Concert, had many, many planning meetings, you guys were involved in those beforehand, afterwards. Nothing major happened. It wasn't fun until Sunday morning, but it was fun when it was all said and done. It was a great learning experience. I've said it before, I think it was the second best thing to ever happen to Guthrie, best thing ever in my opinion, it's when they made the state capital, Oklahoma City, I wouldn't want to be Oklahoma City today, wouldn't be the same here. November 14th, in this room, we had, state EM had an exercise called Earth, Wind, and Fire. We used this room, I wrote up tornado injects, a lot of you guys here were participating in that, it was a great event, we learned a lot, kind of go from there. In closing, you guys have helped me do three things, regain your family, have a plan, make a kit, stay informed. Just spread those three things, we'd be much better off. Thank you for your trust, your support, if you guys have any questions, let me know, hopefully I stayed to my time limit. I'll pass out a little more detail, if, like I said, if you've got questions, let me know, and I'm always around and get you all taken care of.
And he's just handing it all to Wanda, we'll pass it to her.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, David. I want to ask you a question.
David Ball, yeah. You got your ten issues on deck?
Yes.
He doesn't want to answer questions, apparently.
We didn't have to use a button, but she was ready to say all day.
We just wanted you to stand up, sir, because you're on camera. Anybody have any questions for him?
No, I just want to express a thank you on behalf of this city. I mean, for me personally, I knew you did a wonderful job, and I'm sure the rest of the city council will act for that.
I appreciate that, we have a good working relationship, city-county, hopefully we can keep that, if we have issues that we can make it better, let me know, and I'll do whatever we can, because we're all in it together. If the city does well, the county does well, the county does well, the city does well. So, I appreciate everybody, anybody from the city has always been very grateful, I know sometimes when we were dealing with the flood, Valley probably got tired of seeing, oh, it's him again, but it's all good, because we're just trying to get information to her. I know she really didn't, but sometimes, I was like, I just called her three times a day, and, but it's all good, because there's, sometimes the state asks a lot of questions, and FEMA asks a lot of questions, and sometimes FEMA, you talk to a different person and they never tell you the same thing three times in a row, as you guys know if you've dealt with them in the past.
The balance no longer there, so you're going to have to initiate that.
Yeah, to have a new person, but everybody works well together, and I thank you guys for your trust and opportunity, and like I said, if you need anything, let me know, the stuff that's going around has all my numbers on there, so.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
David Ball, Emergency Management. All right, number three, Animal Control Annual Update. Suzie, welcome to the head of the table.
Thank you.
And you can sit.
I feel like I'm on camera here.
It's kind of like a dinner table.
Okay, we are a two full-time people, one part-time person facility, division. We had 2,891 calls to service, this is second only to the traffic division. We picked up 1,496 animals in our community this last year. 880 of them were returned or adopted to the people that needed to be where they needed to be.
With a penalty.
I got one.
We had 389 adopted, 92 returned, I'm sorry, 92 went to rescues, and 257 animals were returned to owners. This is a great number, we're really, really excited about that. We've been the recipient of lots of donations from the community and their support. We had the Pet Palooza in July, the mayor was there, the Girl Scouts had a fundraiser, they spent that money and purchased us three pallets of litter, toys, five of the coolest little cat carriers that are embossed with, you know, the Guthrie Girl Scout Troops supports the animal shelter, which we thought was pretty cool. We had a day of service from the Oklahoma Bar Association, we had five lawyers, if you can believe that, in our facility that all cleaned up after the animals, brushed them, took pictures. They put those pictures on their webpages, all, but seven of those animals were adopted.
We just want to talk about animals, that's the only one.
I'm just dying.
We do have lots of jokes, they, the result of that was 17. Actually, the result of that was 17 adoptions for our animal shelter, we were really, really happy to have them. We even had one lawyer who's allergic to animals and sat in the office and posted all those pictures, so we appreciate them.
They're used.
They are, it was a really cool deal. We were fortunate during the tornado to have petfinder.com donate $10,000 worth of brand-new cat cages to our animal shelter, so with our, with our city manager's approval, we were allowed to give our damaged cages to another shelter in southwestern, southwestern Oklahoma. Those cat cages are being used, we see them on their Facebook page, where they were damaged, they had them repaired, they're a little wobbly, but otherwise, they would not have had cages, and it was really, it was really a good thing for us to be able to give back after all that donation that we got. For the second year in a row, one of our staff members was elected to the Oklahoma Animal Control Association, which is responsible for training the animal control officers within the state of Oklahoma. Yay! It's a big honor, it puts us on the forefront of a lot of the information that we wouldn't normally have. We purchased a new heat and air unit, cabinets for our shelter, and the cabinets aren't in yet, but soon. These items were all purchased with donated funds, money left over from donations from the tornado. We spent $3,500 for medical expenses for animals, that was also a grant from the petfinder.com foundation. We still have a considerable amount of money, probably another year before we spend all of that grant. We're real excited about being able to do the extra for the animals. We had an anonymous donor that donated a security camera system to put in the animal shelter, and a camera for outside, so we can try to catch those people that throw animals over the fence, or leave them at the gate, as Maxine knows, we often find them tied to things. Does anybody have any questions?
If someone wants to help in the community, what do they need to do?
We have a volunteer program, everyone can come to the station, fill out a volunteer application, everyone has a background check, as we have lots of women and children that work out there, and once it's approved, then we put them to work, whatever they, and whatever they want to do. We have people that come in and just brush cats, or play with toys with cats, and we have people that bathe or brush, do lots of different things. So, we set up for people with different needs to help, and we appreciate any help. Our city manager's volunteered, and our HR manager has volunteered. Did you like that, Mr. Algren?
You just want to take them all home, that's a common one.
He just wanted to leave. It was a lot of work that day, he worked really, really hard.
But you have two individuals that regularly, every Saturday morning, pretty much.
We do, our volunteers are the bomb.
It's amazing.
We do, we have a particular couple that do come in every Saturday morning, snow, rain, sick, they come in and take care of those cats every single Saturday.
And we couldn't do it without them?
No, volunteerism is what, volunteerism and donations are what have helped our animal shelter run, and we work really hard to get people to come and experience it, because, you know, even if you don't own an animal at home, you can help one there, and then you get to go home, and you don't have to clean up after it. Once you go home, you get to enjoy it for a little while, and it's a great deal of help to them. Socialization sends them home, and we sent a great deal of them home because people do help.
And you can do community service work down there for some of them, depends on what they're in, what they're doing it for?
It's very limited, community service, because we do have lots of women and children, and it's based on what our supervisor approves.
Okay. Any questions for Suzie? Anybody want to run down there and adopt a dozen pets?
Yes.
You're only allowed three in the city.
For your friends.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, out of number four, discussion regarding the city limits and the 50-foot strip.
Renee's going to share that one with us.
We tried to be as transparent as we could on the agenda, by the way, we often refer to it as "the strip," so we didn't really know, and so there's a map that's being passed around that shows you what "the strip" is. So, when we say it's 50 foot, I just want to make sure that when we try to put that on the agenda, it's 50 foot wide, it is much more long, as you can see, as it goes around. We sometimes on staff refer to it like as a moat around Guthrie, so I want to be very transparent on what specifically we're talking about.
About 33 miles long and 52 wide.
Yeah. If you go to your Dropbox, that map is also in there, but this particular, the hard copy one is a little bit easier to read. And Serena said it right, if you can visualize a moat with the city of Guthrie up at the north end, and then the moat at the southeast, east and west. Giving everybody a little bit of history, here back in 1968, the city council decided that it would be a great idea to create a buffer zone around the city. The project, I guess, took on a life of its own, because over a period of years since 1968, that buffer flexed this muscle, if you will. It originally started at 100 feet wide, in some places, it's now 66 feet wide, 50 feet wide, and so my portions of it have been de-annexed, re-annexed, de-annexed, so trying to follow the flow of when meetings were made to accept it was a real challenge. The size, like I said, it varies generally at 50 to 66 feet. Bear in mind, that strip then starts at the center line of the road, so if you include the road, and then go inward 50 feet, it really isn't a whole lot of land, if you want a parcel of land, that's not going to be large enough to build a house on or anything like that. So, we tried to determine what the reason was it for, since I don't believe any of us were here 45 years ago, and we surmised that more than likely, the reason for the buffer strip around that area was to, like Serena says, to create a moat that kept other cities to the south at bay, so that they would not annex property in or near the city of Guthrie. The state of Oklahoma's annexation law, and Randall, this is where I need you to help if I deter too much, requires that the new annexed part be contiguous to the existing city limits. So, again, at that time, creating this buffer touched the city limits in two locations, and having the buffer would not allow Edmund or Oklahoma City to jump at that time and annex any portion of what would have been Logan County area. I think we were talking earlier about the possibility of jumping, and current laws, I think, have changed that to a certain degree. The location, as you look at that map, from the eastern city limit at University, you go east to Post Road, then south, all the way down to Waterloo, then west to Meridian, and up north to College, and then east to the western edge of city limits. So, following that again, it's University to Post, Post to Waterloo, Waterloo kind of on a jagged way up to Meridian, then north to College, and east to the city limits. And that perimeter is about 33 miles. So, it's, visualize road maintenance on that, and I'll just leave that thought with you, and you can enjoy that one next. This really came to light at this last census in 2010. In the year 2000, Guthrie had a population of 9,925. At the 2010 census, our population had grown very slowly to 10,191. In the planning department, we like to know where things are happening, and so we were trying to figure out, okay, of these 266 new residents that we had in the last 10 years, where exactly are they settling? So, we were trying to figure out, okay, are they, are they in the north, the south part of the town, or whatever. We went to ACOG, that's an organization that helps the city in a number of different areas, and with some software that they have, they were able to determine that of that 266 population growth, 203 of them lived in the 50-foot strip. Didn't make any sense, doesn't make any sense, when the strip is only 50 feet wide, and part of that is a road, you can't do that. So, a lot of discussions back and forth on that. We looked at a number of things, trying to figure out how possibly can 203 people live in that area. We went to the Logan County Board of Elections, okay, what precinct do these people vote in, trying to find out exactly where they're located. The Board of Elections does not show anybody in that strip as voting. So, we have a lot of unanswered questions as a result of that, and all of those, we're going to put open here for discussion tonight. There's a lot of items that, you know, as a city, we provide services. If we take a look at this strip and providing services in that area, even though no one, quote, "lives there," but there are businesses there, obviously, the parcels that are adjacent to that strip only occupy a portion of. Issues that we need to look at are full fire, police, street maintenance, building permits, zoning, minimum maintenance standard, nuisance abatement, all these things that, you know, I say tongue-in-cheek, people would really love to see us coming to take care of, you know, police and fire, of course, naturally, but, you know, nuisance abatement, probably not so much. Some of the other things we would have to look at, if we were to keep the strip in an active situation and provide services that we need to do, we need to take a look at staffing to provide those services. You know, that 50-foot strip has got to provide some income to pay salaries, to not only promote the city, of course, but to provide all of those services. That would not balance, it just wouldn't, but that's something that needs to be addressed and looked at. Again, we don't provide city sales tax. Two years ago, we looked into that possibility, it did not turn out well, to be perfectly honest. But back in 2012, just two years ago, we did present before the council at that time, an ordinance to de-annex that full strip, let it be removed so that the city of Guthrie's position on the map could look like most other regular city maps, rather than something with a moat. At that time, the motion was to table it for a while, which that while has passed, so we're bringing it up again now for further discussion from everyone, and we would like to entertain questions, comments, and get direction.
What kind of revenue does that strip bring in, for water revenue?
Oh, we have no water.
Probably none, right?
Absolutely none, that's out of our area.
Well, it sounds to me that any services we provide are a net loss, if there were services.
Yes.
But I think the problem with the strip is no one identifies as being in Guthrie, so they're not going to even ask us, probably, I mean, unless we start really proclaiming that the strip is us, but.
Right, and quite honestly, we often, in the planning department, get phone calls from people who live on the north side of Waterloo. They've called Edmund for assistance, for example, we've had situations where people complain about, where Suzie, about dogs barking, zoning, problems with their neighbor's Thai grass and weeds. Edmund says, well, you need to call Guthrie because you live, quote, "in the strip," and so we have to basically go through this explanation phase of, well, there's a portion you probably aren't in the strip, because a good 25, 30 feet are in right-of-way end street, and it's difficult.
Yeah.
And if I understand it right, if it's correct, if the numbers, if they pull down 203 people off our rolls, when does that become effective, immediately, or on the next census?
Next census.
So, and by then, if we add another 12 people back into our population, we're over 10,000 again.
That's correct.
And if I understand ACOG, if you're under 10,000, you have a different set of grants and things you apply for versus being over 10,000.
You're, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You're correct, but there aren't that many, we've come up with two.
Not that big of a difference.
No, it's really, it's really not.
We thought it was, you know, when I came in, that's what I was told, is that there were all these grants, so we went researching all these grants, and there's.
What are the two grants?
REEP and, hold on here, I have it in my thing. REEP is one, and the Small Cities Program, because we really want to know what, you know, will we really lose an animal?
It might be nice if we can petition and say, look, we're really officially under, because they're REEP grants, they do get, you know, when I go to ACOG, they talk about REEP grants, and we could potentially dip into that, so that'll be something that I'll work on if this is.
If we could get that way, but so many of those grants, to say, what was your population at the last census?
Right.
Unless we can get the federal government to come back and change that census, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, that's.
Well, that's something we could acquire in, yeah.
Well, and to re-educate everybody, the folks that weren't here, the reason it did pop up on the radar screen in 2012 was that Serena's predecessor felt like there's new development just between the stretch, if you were to look at the map, between 35 heading back to the west, and there is new development, and there is new sales tax revenue dollars along that strip, if we want to call it, and that's where we got into. We went into the issue of determining whether or not we could charge sales tax and have an, you know, a graduated rate to a sales tax. I don't want us to forget that there's, even though we can look at it and we can all say, well, yeah, abolish this darn thing, there is some sales tax revenue there, I don't, but to what expense, and that's always been the question, is how much is it going to cost us to try to recover some small amount of income?
Well, I think you have two problems, one is that you have some political problems, because the reason we backed out of that fish place in the first place was because of the threat of protests down there, because they said, you can't service that, and that's true. Servicing is going to cost a lot of money, to do the minimum maintenance, to do the police and fire and the zoning and whatnot.
Well, I'm not worried about the fish place anymore.
Well, I'm just saying, that's an example of why we backed out of that, because they will not stand for it. In fact, Commissioner Sharpton said, if we try to develop down there, he's going to make us Maintenance Waterloo Road, and that's going to be a huge expense, it's one of the most used roads in the county.
Oklahoma County takes care of the Waterloo Road.
Well, but if we really push our, we actually kind of have a little piece of the road, and they will argue that we'll have to maintenance outside of the road or whatnot, so. According to Sharpton, that's Mark Sharpton.
I don't know what Mark's comments are, but I do know that we were in the right to be able to do that, and I think it's more important that everybody understands, I don't care one way or the other, I just think it's important to make sure that everybody has a good synopsis of what's transpired to this discussion.
And you're saying if we were to annex contiguous to that strip, we could then gain sales tax off of that, those locations? Right now, we get zero.
Right now, we get zero, but now, if you, case in point, there's a new Sonic along that stretch, there's a Leslie's Pool, there's a development that's occurring all the way down Waterloo Road, that we do not take any sales tax revenue from those folks.
They're outside the 50-foot strip, though.
And that's the question I have, is how far past the 50, are they actually in it, are they out of it, or are they?
The building structure itself is back farther beyond the 50-foot strip.
You probably do that intentionally. Well, I've heard that folks in the past thought they were going to get taxed, so they moved their registers further back even, just so they make sure they wouldn't get taxed. So, they'll fight it down there.
I've heard that.
The county did tell us that we were going to get to maintain our park in Waterloo if we got the Catfish Cabin and then.
I just want everybody to recognize that there was a, why this is even an issue.
There was another deal that was a consensual annexation at another park down there, I think it was on Broadway in Waterloo, but we were agreeing not to enforce some of our codes, and got an AG's opinion on that, so we can't do that, so we couldn't grant the waivers.
Well, and really, if it comes to a buffer, we're worried about a buffer as the original intent here, that little area that has all the homeowners associations in Southern Logan County, that, all those nice houses and stuff, they're totally against being in a municipality. I mean, they will be the buffer between Edmund and us for a long time, because they just don't want to be part of the city, and it's what Jason Murphy calls the libertarian experiment. Well, that, they don't want a city, they want to rely on the county for all their services, which puts a burden on the county, but I think that keeps any type of, and plus, you don't want to say annexation anymore. I mean, it was a big deal in the 60s all the way through the 80s, that's why Oklahoma City is one of the biggest cities in the United States, has the biggest footprint in the United States, besides some cities in Alaska, but they don't do that anymore, because people will fight annexation. In fact, when I was running for city council, I had a lady out just on the other side of 35, said, "Do not annex us," you know, and it's just like, okay, I don't plan to, but, and that's not, so annexation is a real negative around here, so. I don't see Edmund doing that, and you've actually, sorry, Edmund has actually said they won't annex.
No intentions.
No intentions, so.
So, what we have is the same ordinance that was brought 2012, you know, at y'all's direction, if you wanted us to put that on the agenda, we're happy to do that, I know it's been reviewed by Randall in the past, we'll have him review it again, so we have that ordinance prepared. Staff comes to you with the recommendation, probably to de-annex unless we find something, we have digged and digged to find what would reason not to. I think that Trey brings up a good point, if that were true, that then you would annex contiguous to that strip to grab that sales tax, I think it'd be a huge fight.
I think the way annexation law's gone since all this occurred, is it's going to be very difficult for us to have a strip that's not contiguous to real Guthrie and do anything.
You're jumping over.
Because Seminole did that years ago, from Seminole Town to the interstate, just went up the highway, and the Supreme Court said, no, can't do that, and I think we're kind of analogous to that.
And do know, when we redistrict the town, the wards, we consider, because we have been talking about that, that if we get rid of the strip, and I think it's, is it this ward two that it's in, that those numbers won't affect the ward?
Well, the election ward does not consider.
Well, the election ward does not consider individuals that live adjacent to the strip as voters.
Well, and we didn't know that at the time, but I know when we did the lines, we made sure the population has to be within, like, five percent, and it, it still will be with that line, with those numbers out. However, anybody ever counts it, so.
I know it's a lot to, especially individuals that are new to the.
Well, everything I've ever heard about the strip is, "Why is it there? Why do we need it?" Edmund didn't go it back, I mean, they don't want it, they don't wanna get any bigger, they don't want the problems, they don't want the headaches. I don't know why we need to keep it, to be honest, unless somebody's got a, I, I've heard other rumors that on Waterloo and thirty-five, there's gonna be a small hospital put in there on the north side, and they want the annex, they want the strip still to be there. I don't understand why. We can't provide any services, and, and that may be five, ten years down the road, I don't know. Wouldn't bring us any tax or anything. And that's the only thing I've ever heard going down there, so.
When I talked to Senator Murphy, I mean, Representative Murphy and Senator Griffin, both of them are very against it. They've heard from multiple people, they don't like it, especially in Southern County, they, they don't like the strip being there at all, so they've had several people come to them.
So at this point, if I understand what's going on, I will assume we, if the council doesn't really need, doesn't want the strip, we wanna get rid of it?
I like to put it on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda and see what we can do with that, so.
And in your drop box under today's item is all of the backup information, it's a copy of the ordinance, a copy of the notes for today, et cetera, if you wanna look at it, it's in your drop box.
All right, so if we'll put that on the next agenda, we'll go from there. Any other discussion on number four, on the fifty-foot strip? Any questions, concerns, anything? Number five, discussion regarding agenda items. I'm gonna bring up one, just because sometimes I don't read everything in the paper I'm supposed to read, and this one, it was in the newsletter on December seventh about the, talking about the, going over to Coyle with water. And a lot of people don't ever read that, and I never saw it anywhere else. And we're gonna have a public hearing in the council where Myers, it's Myers that's gonna talk to us about that?
It's required by DEQ to have a public hearing. It's not about the contract, it'll be about the construction.
What does this do with us on this lawsuit? Is this part of rural water district? Is this?
No, we're, this is not part of rural water.
This has nothing to do with them? So is that concerned?
Just a wholesale water contract, they need water, and came to us and asked us, that's been over a year ago.
Right, they wanna buy water from us, who's paying for that water line?
They're borrowing the money from.
Coyle is.
OWR.
I think Coyle's borrowing from Water Resource Pool.
So this won't cost the City of Guthrie anything?
No.
All right. I know their water owners nasty. In, in the, in the future, if, if, I know it's in the newspaper and which.
Oh, Mayor, I always hate to misquote something, I need to check and see who the actual borrower is on that. I know their rates pay back, but we may have to own that line to provide water to their city.
Or not out.
So it's not gonna affect us debt-wise, I mean, if we have to borrow whatever is three-hundred thousand, but I do need to check and see whether Coyle is.
So, so you're saying we may be borrowing the money, they're paying us back as.
They're paying us back, and we're making money on the water sales. Whatever we do, we're gonna make money on the water sales.
Was there a contract for water sales with him already?
Yeah, yeah. There is with Coyle?
I think we have, well, we've got a tentative agreement.
Yeah, there's an agreement.
Well, we ran into some issues with construction and easements and something else.
It was getting the tribe to answer the environmental assessment, which they never did, DEQ excused us, because we couldn't get a response for months, 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 and so they allowed us to move forward. So that, there was a holdup there for quite some months.
What kind of, I haven't seen the contract.
Well, you said it was tentative.
How long ago was that?
It was back in eleven.
It was a short term.
Over a year ago.
Yeah, it was.
It was a year ago?
It's back when they got deemed that they had poured their water with some leak.
Or a leak.
So, so was it a short-term contract, or was it a?
We had an agreement that we would sell the water.
It had to be an agreement. There's a bulk agreement, and then the price will be determined after the construction, because we don't, we don't know the construction.
We do the take and pay on it, or?
Yes, it's a take and pay.
Like, like. So do we sell them water down bulk, they come get it, take over? We don't, we don't do anything on the.
We don't sell them any water, just being first.
And this contract agreement that was done in eleven or whatever?
Maybe early twelve.
We will be looking at that again to make sure it's still appropriate, or beats the knees?
How many units are in Coyle?
We would sell them, we sell them just like we do to Langston, the bulk water, that's how I understand Coyle, and, and y'all can ask that in the, the public hearing, but just like Langston, it's a take-or-pay contract, and then they disperse it to.
I was just wondering, how many numbers, how?
Their population is six hundred.
They've got three-hundred-and-twenty-five homes.
It is about three hundred watts.
So about tenth are household numbers? Because we have, what, thirty-four hundred units?
No, we have seven, how many, how many thou, residential is seven thousand?
We send out four thousand bills, and there's houses that we don't service, so.
So about four thousand, yeah.
Yeah, that was my question on, is, you know, in the lawsuit, we had, we've had some things going back and forth about, well, you know, selling them water, do we have enough water to sell, can we, you know, we had some things that.
This will, this will be a lot smaller use than rural water, should we ever get an agreement with rural water. Hope so.
Well, what he says. Well, Phil, Phil's done all that during that lawsuit. I don't wanna speak too much about lawsuits.
Right, I don't either, but it's still, I don't want it to play in being an issue with me and that either.
So right now, this will not be affected by rural water in that lawsuit anyway. It will all be paid for by Coyle, whether we get the loan or not. And then if, as long as they make the payment, we're okay. If they don't, yeah, if they don't, they make the payment.
If they don't, we earn their water system and their sales tax revenue.
Yeah, we don't. Now, they don't have a whole lot of sales tax revenue over there, do they?
I don't know. But well, they'll have to cross-plate that to Water Resource Pool.
That was basically items four and five, and then Myers Engineering is gonna be in the council for the public discussion, public hearing on that.
And we've got a Coyle.
They gonna be here too?
I'm not sure if they will be.
Any other agenda items anybody wants to talk about, or anything else on that one? Any other agenda items? Number six, request for future items of discussion. We've already talked about the strip, so that's on there. Anything else?
Is there gonna be a report on the, the revenue from Mumford and Sons? What, what's a report from the systems committee and?
Do we have a?
Oh, downtime improvement committee? They're meeting again Friday, so we can.
Next workshop, get a report or something?
Noon, yeah, noon Friday right here.
But for the workshop, get at least a report.
I don't know how close they are to decision-making. It might be not this next one, but another one. We're getting some, doing what they've asked us to do, getting quotes for dual voltage on light posts and et cetera, and maybe Justin Fortney will come as the chair and give a presentation.
Always sting it.
I hope so.
Maybe awesome.
And there was one item, I sent Neil's weekly update about, I mentioned that we have a firefighter that is out on an injury for a prolonged period of time. What that does to us is increases overtime significantly. The fire department has seen an increase in overtime over the last five years that, to me, is a raise of concern. What I would like to do is hire a rover. I don't, by law, I don't have to, it, it's within the budget, because you've got one person gone, and when you put a rover in, what you do is you plug that individual, I use the word rover, in other words, they're not set on a schedule like an A, a B, a, a green, purple, what do we do?
They're not on a normal schedule, they're plugging our vacancies. Like, guy's off from surgery recovery for X number of months, this guy works his position. A guy's off in class for two, three weeks.
It's like a substitute teacher, right?
It is, but he's still a full-time employee, and if he's an extra guy one day, that's one less person we potentially would have to call in if we had a big incident. There's a lot of overtime savings that could be afforded by having this. And the union contract has a position, provisions for that position built in and has for years. Wanda, you probably remember, they had one for quite a while, several years ago, but it's, it's been a while since they've had.
No, is this just temporary until the person gets back?
That's kinda the interesting part, their overtime right now, their last year overtime in the fire department was around a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars, which is astonishing, to be honest. We are taking measures to, to drop that. The chief has done some, some recent events to change that. We've, we've gotta get ahold of our overtime, but it gets to the point, and HR will, can speak to it, it gets to a point, if you're paying that much overtime, you might as well hire another individual to cut that overtime, because if, and let's say a firefighter costs the city thirty thousand-plus benefits, or, you know, whatever, let's use a thirty-five-thousand-dollar number, bunker gear, everything included, there's a point where then you won't be paying overtime because you have a standing person. What we wanna do is test it for the next nine months, however long. What we'll do is whenever the person is hired, and what we're hoping for is a paramedic, because if it's a paramedic, then we end up being able to know the rate of a paramedic, and y'all might remember that from the, the rate, rate change recently. So what, what we're hoping, we're gonna test it, if it does what we think it's gonna do, we may come to you and ask, "Can we put that in the budget and drop the overtime?"
Well, and correctly, if I'm wrong, a lot of our calls are EMT-related.
Absolutely.
So we really need.
Probably eighty percent of our calls are EMT.
So we need an EMT person, we need a paramedic.
Interesting tidbit, just for you guys, I took a transfer earlier, because we were a little busy, they did fifty-seven transfers out of the hospital for December.
Can you explain to us what that means for the?
Transfer, it's something that Logan doesn't have the capability to treat. Since Mercy's taken over, some of their in-house capabilities have been taken away. They've gotta be transferred to either Mercy, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma Heart Hospitals.
Pregnancies?
Yeah, they're not doing any labor and delivery. So anything in those advanced levels will have to be transferred to a larger facility in the metro, and we're the primary care ambulance to transfer those patients out of there. Currently, if they're advanced life support, paramedic-level transfers, unless our one paramedic happens to be on duty, or if they have a nurse or somebody at the hospital can ride with us, they're farming those out to cash and ambulance, there's a transfer service called Miller EMS that will come in and do them, because we don't have the capability to do those. So by hiring this person as a paramedic, that gives us two shifts with a paramedic, so we can start taking those, and those are revenue generators. Transfers are where the money's at, because they're already in that hospital care, so the bills get paid. I mean, insurance will not doubt those, because they're already there.
How many paramedics do we have?
We have one.
Our first hire's this year.
And he's only been here for six months.
We should, we should even have more than that, then.
Well, we're.
We should, I don't disagree with you at all, sir. Previous administration had no desire to do it, because they were afraid they would train the people, and they would leave and go to a bigger department. That was just their way of thinking. I think a lot differently, I know Serena does as well. Use them while we got them. You know, if they wanna leave, let them leave, but we, you know, it's, the service to the citizens, we need it. I mean, we're in the perfect geographic position for paramedic-level care to make a huge difference.
Well, it seems to me, if eighty percent of the calls or so are EMT-related, you can't cover that with one paramedic, or even probably two.
Well, we have one shift out of three that has a paramedic on duty, so.
So at least three.
We've got some ideas for next fiscal year and bring to you guys about changing some of that stuff, but, you know, we're mid-year right now, so this is kind of a short-term solution to the overtime and our, our little manpower due to the injury.
So with, I stay within agenda, what I was saying is that if you want us to bring a full presentation of that to council, we can. If, if you would allow us to, to try this for a little bit, and we would come to you in the budget next year to say, "Okay, this is what happened with it, we wanna do X, Y, Z." So if I can just kinda get head nods, we'll, we'll move forward to get a rover, it should not increase cost, it should decrease cost, is what we're attempting to do, and provide better service to our customers.
And for future items also, have we ever updated or upgraded our ambulance district? I mean, used to, you had to be, if you were here and you were the closest one, you got it. Now it's not that way anymore, you can make it smaller, and people that are farther out, the rural people pay extra for that kind of service. Have we ever?
We had a meeting with Commissioner Sharpton a month and a half ago about that very, very subject. The problem is, the county commissioners are gonna have to make that move.
They have to do that.
They're the ones that do that.
They're gonna have to make the move, it'll actually be voted on by all the voters in the county, depending on which direction they go, but we did discuss it, so.
Well, do we need to, I mean, is it something we can help create the vision on?
That's where we were planting the seed.
That's kinda where we're, we tried to get the seed in his head and make him understand where we're coming from, because.
Do they give us money for that?
Well, about a third of our EMS district, well, it's the Guthrie School District, those patrons pay property tax that funds our operation, but the other two-thirds of our coverage area is basically getting.
They get free service.
So are they pretty open to this change?
I don't wanna speculate or speak on the commissioners' behalf, but I think it's worth a conversation.
You know, you used to sell insurance for like a thousand dollars for somebody out of the area, right? You still do that?
Yeah, they, no, it became a billing nightmare keeping up with it. We don't have anybody in-house that, like, we used to have Beth that was the customer service rep, and she handled a lot of that, now we don't have anybody in-house that does that.
Does this influence ISO ratings?
Hasn't, completely separate. ISO just has to do with fire.
Is there a different EMT rating?
No, grading, schedule per se.
Okay.
So we need to keep the rest of that discussion with county commissioners, people need to pay for that service, not, not us, for them.
Totally agree.
All right. All right, and we want to bring up the volunteers possibly in the fire department.
What I'd, I'm glad you did bring that up. What I've asked the, the chief is that we test this over the next three months, I say three, that was my direction, is that we look at what this rover can do. I, I'm, I'm not opposed to volunteers, you probably know that the fire department probably would be. Our primary goal is more boots on the ground and safety.
And I would think that the volunteers, it gives you, when it comes time to hire, it gives you a trained force that you know what you're getting.
It's a good recruiting tool.
Good recruiting tool.
When it's nine degrees and there's a house fire on a building at midnight.
So in April, you'll bring a report to us?
I'm gonna watch it. Well, I, I say three months from the date of hire of hopefully what is a paramedic.
April, May, September.
Yeah, whatever we can make on her.
You'll bring, you'll bring us a report.
We do believe we have a candidate.
Yeah, we're gonna visit where they got them.
So do we need to tie you down and talk to you about volunteers, or we just leave that to Serena?
We've had several discussions on it.